All right, well, I would like to call to order this regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission. Obviously, it's a virtual meeting today, and we are opening the meeting at 7:23. And I guess we will now stand for the pledge of allegiance or cite the pledge of allegiance if you'd like. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Peter, before we get started, I want to double check with Chris Saladin on our technical issues if we could real quickly, please.
Sure.
Chris, is this live on the YouTube channel that we publicize, or is it on a different YouTube channel?
As far as I know, it was going on to ours, but let me double check with Carrie.
Same. Same link, same, yep, yeah, back.
He just told me it's going out on our normal YouTube channel.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, okay. Clerk, has the roll been taken?
It has, all are present tonight.
Okay, and then before we get into proclamations and presentations, I just wanted to remind the public that you can still participate in our meeting with public comment by writing an email to comment, C-O-M-M-E-N-T, at M-T dash pleasant.org, and include your name and address, and we will read your comment as long as it's under five minutes. And for our commissioners, just to make sure, use the raise a hand feature on the Zoom, and we will take all roll call votes tonight, and just make sure you speak loud, clear, so everything comes in, and then our first proclamation or our presentation tonight is on the 2020 census.
All right, do you want me to just go ahead?
Sure.
Okay, so I just have a few, no actual presentation, obviously, we're going to try to mess with screen sharing or anything tonight, so I'm just going to run through a few bullets that, of things that we've been doing and things that we're hoping to be doing, and actually some hot off the press information that I just got a couple of minutes ago. So one of the things that we have been doing, and it's very important, is we have been meeting with CMU and with this Vice President of Student Affairs, Sean Oakree, and they were able to work with President Davies, who graciously put together a letter and was able to send that out to the students, and we actually had a really good open rate, open response rate on that. Heard from University Communications that they usually say anything that's 30% or higher on a response rate or open rate is really, really good, and initially, and I think it's grown since then, we had over 50% open rate. So we were pretty happy with that, that that message went out, and President Davies was saying how important the census was and that the students should be counted. They also shared that on their other social media channels, and it got quite a bit of shares and traffic on their social media platforms, Facebook and Twitter. Pushed a social media post out as well that was a specific video related to college students. The Census Bureau, once all these changes started happening, actually created a video specifically designed for college students and trying to explain to them where they should be actually filling out their census hat. If you want to check that out, you can actually, I tried it today, you can just search YouTube, United States Census, college students, and it'll probably be the first or second hit when you get your search results. Go ahead and check that out, it's about three minutes long, it's got some good information about where they should vote. We did recently, you might have seen on our Facebook page, we conducted a Facebook giveaway to try to get some traffic and some shares going. We were able to give away some tablets that we'll be sending out once the ability to actually send mail easily again happens, so we do have the winners for those. We'll be pushing those out to the winners of that, that was just to kind of get some more word about the same type of thing, where college students should be voting, so that was a success. We had several radio spots, I don't know if any of you listen to regular over-the-air radio that often, but on my 104.3 and 92.3 FM, we did actually have quite a few commercials. We had, where 240 commercials go out on both of those channels, and that was over the last four weeks or so. I think it was through the end of last week. We did a radio call interview, Jacob Kane actually was able to call in and give some good information, and we hope to be able to do that again maybe this month, to get some more information out there as we continue to try to increase our response rate. We've been working very closely with the schools, they've been one of our really good partners as well, the Mount Pleasant Public Schools, and as you recall, we did do some stuff with Friday folders, we sent those out, and that information came out before all of the stay-at-home orders, so a lot of the parents got that information. But with the increase of the pandemic and the lunches that the schools are doing, we actually reached out because we had purchased quite a few napkins, thousands of napkins that we're going to be using at different bars and restaurants and giving those out and using them at our events. So we actually were able to give them a bunch of Census 2020 napkins, and they're going to be putting those into the lunches that they're going to be sending out to the kids. So that's a great way for us to get some information out and to provide a piece of service that they are going to need anyway if they're putting napkins in there. We also gave them a bunch of business cards, we had created business cards to be used at our events, and obviously, since we had to cancel our events, we weren't going to be using them for that fashion. So thanks to Jennifer Verliger and her staff and everybody else at the school, they're going to be actually including those in one of their upcoming mailings as well. So that business card will have an actual link on it to go directly to the census and a QR code that will take them right there if they haven't filled it out already. We've been working with landlords, that's another key place where we're trying to focus on students. We actually worked with United Apartments, they were able to send a text message out to all of their residents talking about the census and the importance of it and where to take the census. So we're going to continue to work with landlords and hope that we can get some other landlords to do the same type of thing and be able to give us some access to those students that are off-campus, that wouldn't be counted in group quarters, that are living in apartments and complexes throughout the city and surrounding. Continue to work with the Isabella County Census Advisory Council and the Great Lakes Bay Region Group. They are actually in the midst of planning. Our city census group had actually come up with an idea of maybe try to do some competitions around response rates, and they were actually working on some of the same type of things, so we are working with them. If you remember Chloe Uptograph, who did a presentation for you several months ago, she's the Director of the Great Lakes Bay Region Census Group. She's actually putting together a digital census week that we're hoping maybe roll out in, towards the end of April, to have a digital census week since we can't do a lot of the stuff that we're going to do in person. So some of that will be, we're hoping to have like a bracket competition where we have, the counties are able to compete against each other and actually, over the course of several months, have a competition on response rates and try to get some friendly competition going to boost some of those response numbers. What I said, hot off the press, actually, it came out literally, I got an email before the meeting, just a couple of minutes before the meeting. The Census Bureau, I think I told you, had already extended a couple of weeks on most of their stuff and had pushed the end of the census out into the middle of August instead of the end of July. The press release that they just released in the last hour is now saying that there is not 100% clear whether it's officially done or if they're asking Congress for it, but it looks like they're trying to push out the self-response all the way out to October 31st. So based on all of the delays that they're seeing, I think they're figuring a lot of their delays are going to push well past the 1st of June before they're going to be able to get a lot of their field services out. So this will allow them, if they're not starting until after June, to be able to push out that self-response rate all the way to October 31st. Now, there still is that December 31st date that the President is, it's in the Constitution that the President gets those numbers, but they're actually working to potentially change that. If they're able to extend to October 31st, they're hoping that that three months can also go into, so they wouldn't have to have the numbers to the President until April 30th, 2021. So I think that's likely to happen, and we should be able to have that extension, which should help us out. You know, if we get through this and the state starts to open back up again and we can start pushing out some more information, the longer we have to do that, the better with some of the issues that we've had so far. Just a quick updated response numbers as of 4/12, so yesterday. I don't think that the group quarters has actually been included yet, so some of our numbers are a little bit lower. I expect to see them jump a little bit once the group quarter from CMU, those dorm units are added in. But as of now, Mount Pleasant is sitting at 45.8%, which is not too bad. Overall, in Michigan, Michigan's at 54.7, Union Township's at 41.3, Isabella County's at 49.8. That 45.8 that we're at in comparison to where we were final last time in 2010, we were at 74.8. So you know, we're creeping up on where we were the last time at least, so we'll continue to push that number up as we can with some of those things that I talked about.
Thank you, Jeremy, is there any questions for Jeremy? Seeing none. Okay, uh, thank you again.
Welcome.
Yeah. Uh, next on our agenda, do we have any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none. Manager Ridley, do we have any public comment? Open the public comment.
Um, let me double check to make sure nothing came in. We have no public comment for items that are on the agenda.
Okay. By closing the public comment on agenda items, we'll move to our receipt of petitions and communications. And Manager Ridley?
Yes, in your packet, the only petition, the communications that you had were the report on pending items as well as the monthly report on complaints received. But I have to apologize, a communication came in last week that should have been included in the agenda packet, and I overlooked putting it to have included. I think most of you saw it already, but for the sake of the public, I would like to read it as if it was a public communication this evening, and it was a communication from Jim Holton. And what Mr. Holton's communication said is, "I am asking that on your April 13th City Commission meeting that you suspend your food truck ordinance for 30 days to allow food vendors to participate within the city. They currently set up in Union Township. I have asked the crews and chef to set up in the Mountain Town Station parking lot, since I'm fully closed, but the $1,000 fee is just too much at this time for him to spend. I would put, I would ask that you put on your agenda to revisit this issue again on your 11th meeting to see if you want to extend this ordinance suspension or allow it to expire." And I would just indicate for the sake of the public that we did look at having this as an agenda item, but it is not on this agenda, and the reason being is that in discussions with the Mayor and Vice Mayor and I, we determined that this item wasn't really ready for action on behalf of the City Commission because as we've talked about what we may want to do locally regarding fees and so forth, that it's been our goal to address it in a comprehensive manner. So we've added this item to those lists of things to address at our upcoming meetings. Let me look at a more comprehensive approach to local fees and charges.
Okay, thank you, Manager Ridley. Next is our consent calendar items, items on the consent calendar. Have the asterisk next to them on the agenda, are there any items that need to be removed from the consent calendar? Seeing none, Manager Ridley, would you like to walk us through those consent calendar items?
Yes, we're recommending the following items for your consent calendar. The first is the minutes of the regular meeting of March 23rd, and I should mention that in the minutes that were in your packet, there is no mention that that meeting was held in an electronic or virtual format. So we're trying to get a better indication, according to the Governor's Order, whether that should be noted somewhere in the minutes. So even if you approve these tonight, we may have to add a notation about how that meeting was held, but we're waiting for some guidance on that at this point. We then have four bids for your consideration this evening. The first one is for sewer relining, and this is pretty much an annual process we do to protect our sewer lines, and we're recommending the low bid this evening. And because the prices were lower than we had originally anticipated, we're recommending that we add some additional sewer relining to the project this year. So we're recommending award of a contract to Inland Waters Pollution Control for not to exceed amount of $117,000, which is the amount we had budgeted for sewer relining. The second bid is for a rehabilitation of the Pickard Street Lift Station, and we're recommending the low bid of RBF construction for that lift station rehab for a dollar amount of $26,750. The next bid is a much larger one, and this is a result of research that the wastewater treatment staff has been doing over the last 15 months because as you'll recall, some of our chemical feed tanks had some failures. So we looked at various options of how to fix those tanks and have them appropriately located, and as part of that evaluation, we also looked at using ultraviolet light for part of the process to replace some other capital projects that we had coming up over the next couple of years. So after all of that evaluation with the engineers and the bids that we've received, we believe that we're ready to move forward with installing the new storage tanks in a separate building and also installing the ultraviolet processing. And this project design, we believe, gives us the best long-term investment when you look at the capital cost efficiency, the safety that it brings, and also the impact on long-term operational costs. And so the contract that we're recommending be awarded tonight is for $1,161,000 and would be with J.R. Heinemann as the construction contractor. This will be funded with dollars that were originally allocated last year, some tribal 2% funds that we received, and also funds in the existing wastewater treatment plant reserve. So we're recommending the appropriate budget amendments to fund that project. And then the last bid this evening is for the construction management of that project. And we've been using C2AE for the design of the project, and so they are most familiar with it. So their bid for the construction is worth $35,000 for this project. Next, we're recommending authorization for the Mayor and the Clerk to sign two amendments to our standard street lighting agreement with Consumers Energy, and these are both related to roadwork that will be done at High Street this year. And while that roadwork is being done, Consumers is looking to replace lights at the intersection of Arnold and High with an LED light instead of the Cobra light, and there's no cost to the city for this, but we just need to merely update the contract to indicate the type of lighting that is on that street. And then the second amendment would be for the removal of one of the poles at the intersection of Mission and High. And you'll recall that earlier this year, you approved lighting improvements at Mission and High that are being funded by the Downtown Development Authority, and this would just remove one of those poles at the time that this project is being done by MDOT, so it makes it more efficient. And then lastly, we have the approval of controls and warrants.
Okay. Commissioner Gillis?
Yes, I move to accept the consent calendar as presented.
I will second that.
Okay.
Aye.
Is there any discussion?
I have, I have one discussion item, just on the payrolls and warrants, I noticed a lot of refunds, and I wondered what this, what those were in reference to because they were a lot of different amounts.
I'm guessing, but Mary Ann, feel free to jump in here. I think they were refunds for recreation programs that we had planned to start in April and early May that we ended up having to cancel. Is that correct, Mary Ann?
Yes, that's correct, and it would be various different programs, so the amounts would vary depending on what program the participant was enrolled in.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ronan? It is muted.
Yeah, I was just going to second the motion, I don't actually have anything to add.
Okay. I would just like to add that the project with our wastewater treatment with the UV light, I'm particularly happy to see going forward. That's going to save us about $28,000 in annual chemical costs and also 29,000 pounds of disinfection products being sent into the Chippewa River. So, and also we expect to have superior treatment of our water, and so I think the project we, we as a city should be really proud of, so glad to see that going forward. With no other discussion, all those in favor, I guess we'll have a roll call though.
Roll call, yeah.
Yep, so I guess we're ready for a roll call.
Sure. Commissioner Alsager?
Aye.
Commissioner Gillis?
Yes.
Commissioner Lalone?
Aye.
Commissioner Ronan?
Aye.
Commissioner Tolles? Thank you, still, I think you're still muted, Pete.
I heard and I saw him say aye.
Bottom left-hand corner.
Chris, can you unmute him?
Pete, move your mouse to the bottom of the screen on the left-hand side, and you should see a little mute, a little microphone with a slash through it.
Thank you.
There we go, Commissioner Tolles?
Aye.
Thank you. Let's see, Vice Mayor Perschbacher?
Aye.
Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, great. Uh, next on our agenda is item number four, to receive the 2021-2026 Proposed Capital Improvement Plan and to set a public hearing for May 26th. Manager Ridley?
Yes, the city charter requires the submission of this capital improvement plan at your first meeting in April, and today must have been the day for technical difficulties because we had a little bit of trouble getting it loaded up to the website today, but right before your meeting started, it was finally loaded to the website and is available there for viewing. And we can also get printed copies to any of the commissioners who are interested in reading it in paper instead of having to read it online. But we will have various work session discussions on this plan over the next couple of months before it's considered for approval in June. And quite frankly, things have changed over these last three weeks. During those discussions, we may want to talk about whether any changes need to be made to the plan before it's approved, or whether it might potentially need to be amended as we learn more about our future economic condition. But we'll have time to make those decisions before June. So all we're asking you to do tonight is set the required public hearing on the plan, which we typically hold at our second meeting in May, so that would be May 26th this year. So we're recommending that you set that public hearing.
Good. Commissioner Gillis?
I move we accept the capital improvement plan and set a public hearing for May 26th.
Good. Vice Mayor Perschbacher?
I second that.
Any discussion? Commissioner Gillis? Do you have your hand up? Okay. Seeing no discussion, I guess we can go for our vote, for roll call vote.
Okay. Start with Commissioner Tolles?
Aye.
Commissioner Ronan?
Aye.
Commissioner Lalone?
Aye.
Commissioner Gillis?
Yes.
Commissioner Alsager?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Perschbacher?
Aye.
Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Next on the agenda is to consider a resolution confirming administrative decisions regarding utility bills and extending administrative authority. Manager Ridley, would you like to introduce this comment?
Yes, you'll recall at our last meeting, I mentioned at the end of the meeting that based on the situation we were in with the coronavirus, that there may need to be some decisions that need to be made fairly quickly as we work through the process. And so what this resolution in front of you does, and it was drafted by City Attorney Mike Comier, is it really does three things. It first confirms three of the actions that I administratively approved before we sent out the utility bills at the end of March, and those three things were to move the utility bill due date to be May 15th instead of April 15th, waiving any late fees based on that revised due date, and also not charging for the curbside recycling pickup due to the MIR facility being closed and therefore us not picking that up. So this resolution confirms those three actions which have already been taken. And then there's a paragraph in the resolution that also clearly gives the city manager the authority to continue to make those appropriate time-sensitive decisions that may need to be made if necessary as this pandemic continues. And just like these, I would give you a heads-up before I would be making those decisions and try to contact each of the seven of you to let you know them ahead of time. And then at the next City Commission meeting, we would ask you to take action to confirm the decision or the administrative decisions that were implemented, and if there were concerns with the implementation of any of them, we could address changing them as we move forward. So it would still give you the authority to do that as we look to the future. So the, as I, I think I indicated, it was drafted by the City Attorney, if you have any specific questions on it.
Good. Commissioner Ronan, you have your hand up.
Oh, I...
George, you just muted yourself, like, can't hear you.
That's what I, I thought that's what I did before, actually, but I move that we accept what Nancy just talked about.
Commissioner Gillis?
I second.
Discussion? I, I just want to, I want to say that I will be supporting the resolution tonight. I think Manager Ridley has done a really great job at directing the city over the past few weeks in unprecedented and chaotic times, and I, I think approving this shows we have a lot of confidence in her and trust in that she's going to do the best for the city, so I will be supporting this resolution. Seeing no other discussion, we'll move, move to a roll call vote.
Okay. Commissioner Ronan?
Aye.
Commissioner Tolles?
Aye.
Commissioner Alsager?
Aye.
Commissioner Gillis?
Yes.
Commissioner Lalone?
Aye.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Perschbacher?
Yes.
Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Next on our agenda are announcements on city-related issues and new business. Manager Ridley?
Um, yes, just a couple of updates as far as where we are with addressing service items related to the coronavirus. I've mentioned to a couple of you that as we continue to evaluate each week what city services will be provided, items that maybe were not deemed critical in weeks one through three are now becoming items that we really need to address as we look at weeks four through six under the stay-home, stay-safe order. So you will be seeing some additional city activity out and about the community to start to address some of those things that we believe have moved into the more essential or critical category. And a couple of the things that we, or one of the things that we will be talking about this week is putting a plan together on how to address the backlog in housing licensing inspections, because we have not been able to do those inspections since the middle of March. So by the time the current stay-home, stay-safe order expires on April 30th, we will have about six weeks of those that we need to get caught up on. So we're reviewing our options to determine how best to handle that. And certainly, if there is any city commission action needed on those, we will be sure to bring that back to. But one of the items that probably goes along with that is how we would handle late fees on some of those payments. But again, we just started that. I just wanted to let you know that's one you'll be hearing from me about. The other service thing that is coming at the end of this month is leaf pickup. Our special leaf, spring leaf pickup program is scheduled to take place the week of April 27. And at this point in time, we still plan to complete that scheduled pickup because we feel it's needed to be done in order to protect the vital infrastructure of the storm drains throughout the city. So unless something changes, our intent right now is to still do that, pick up the week of April 27. But we have already been contacted by some landscaping firms who are concerned about properties that use their services. Because under the current stay-home, stay-safe order, landscaping companies cannot provide leaf raking services. So those firms are concerned about what will happen to those property owners who have hired them to rake their leaves for them. And our thought at this point in time is that we would look at scheduling a second citywide leaf pickup after the stay-home, stay-safe order is lifted so that those who are dependent on landscaping services to do that raking for them would still have the ability to have their leaves picked up. I certainly realize there's additional costs to the city for doing that. But as far as what we've looked at so far, we think that's the best option so that we don't have the confusion again about changing the date, but yet we can address the needs of people who do use those landscaping services. So that is our current plan, but we continue to watch the governor's clarifications regarding the stay-home, stay-safe order, because we want to make sure that we are in compliance with that. So if there's any additional clarifications on that, we will notify you if anything changes, but that is our current plan right now. So as I said, we continue to evaluate things on a daily basis to try to make sure we're protecting our community. And we continue to appreciate the flexibility, not only of our community members, but of our staff and our U as we work our way through this. And once again, we want to give a great shout out to those frontline workers, particularly in the healthcare industry across our state, who are dealing with this on a daily basis, and our first responders who have to be conscious of it every time they go out on a run. So we appreciate that, and I still continue to be optimistic that we will come out on the other side of this, and we will be better because of it, because we will have learned a lot about ourselves, our community, and about the human spirit. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Ridley. Well said. Any other announcements or new, new business? All right. I guess we can move into public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. Manager Ridley, is there any public comment?
There is one public comment, and it was actually received on April 6th. But this is the first meeting we've had since then, so I'll go ahead and share it with you. And the communication is received from Steve Roth. He does not provide an address, but his communication indicates that Dr. Shiva, who is credited with the invention of email and who holds four degrees from MIT, has stated that the best defense against the virus is the strength of our immune systems and that exercise, fresh air, and vitamin D from sunlight are important ingredients to this end. Mayor Joseph has invited us to enjoy our city parks for this purpose, that the restrooms are inexplicably locked. We can be arrested and charged as sex offenders if we take a leak in public and that's just for urinating. What if we urgently need the other one? It's simply unacceptable that this situation exists, and laziness is the only possible explanation for it. Shame on the city of Mount Natvery Pleasant. Shame on us.
All right. With no other public comment, we have no closed session and no work session tonight. So I would move to adjourn the meeting at 8:00.